For the 11th, 2020, let's start out with announcements and updates.
I have an announcement, that's not related to the one you're going to make. This is a, on Wednesday, February 19th at 1:00, there is a presentation on the history of Black women and their pivotal roles in the suffrage movement and the Voting Rights Act. The presenter is a woman named Kelly Carter Jackson. She's an APL, Assistant Professor of Humanities in the Department of African Studies at Wellesley College. And the purpose is to educate people about the history of the vote, African-American communities, voter suppression, and explore the ways Black women have advocated for political change with their voices and eventually their votes. It's called Rights and Wrongs: Black Women and the History of Voting. Again, Wednesday, February 19th at 1:00. And you can register by calling, get your pencils ready, 617-730-2770. And it's sponsored by the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations.
Thank you. Mr. Fernandez or Ms. Heller, do you have any announcements on the Census Committee?
Not yet.
Or at least announce that we're accepting applications for the committee, and people should, you know, send them in quickly so we can get this committee going.
Yes, we are actively recruiting membership.
Right.
So announced.
I'll remind folks that nomination papers are available if they are interested in running for office. Those papers are available, I think, up until March 17th, and there's a number of offices across town government that are on the ballot, seats on this board and on the school committee, town meeting member. So those who are interested, check it out. And I know Select Person Fernandez was the featured speaker at an event last week about how to run for office, so he might have some additional information to share about that.
Well, I'll say, I mean, that was terrific. Thanks to the League Women Voters for putting that on. They've got many great events, including this Friday, another one of their, the breakfast events that take place at Anatolia Kebab House on Friday morning at 9:30. The guest there this week, this month is Eitan Hirsch, author of Politics is for Power. I also wanted to say that this Wednesday, the Town Meeting Members Association is hosting a session on how to write a warrant article. There is both an art and a science to writing warrant articles, and I think they'll talk about both. It's going to be, once again, February 12th, tomorrow, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., located in the basement of the Public Health Building, which is at 11 Pierce Street. I hope you can make it.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I have two announcements. One, the Lamb Bank Study Committee will be having its next meeting next Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. Room to be determined. You can email me directly if you're interested in that information. And then I'm attending the Women at the Center 2020 Kickoff Event downtown at One Beacon Street this Thursday, from, I think, I think it's a 7:00 p.m. start. So for more information, you might want to visit the Brookline Center for Mental Health.
Great, thank you. So before we get to our big update on Newberry, I want to make a couple sort of announcements or proposals to the board. First, having to do with, sort of following up on Mr. Fernandez's report of the Town Meeting Association Warrant Article Writing Program. I would like to propose the following. The May warrant has been open a few days, and we will soon be getting warrant articles to be reviewed. To respond to recommendation number three of the Brookline Financial Advisory Committee Report, which talks about warrant articles, I'd like to let proponents of warrant articles know that the Select Board has some standards that they must meet before they come before the board with their articles. I have some proposals, but I would like input from other board members before we circulate to proponents in advance of their appearances before the Select Board. My proposed requirements are, if warrant articles have Internet links, the proponent must provide the Select Board paper copies of the linked material and a representation that the material is from a reliable source with relevant expertise. Warrant article proponents must describe the nature and extent of their engagement with town staff on their warrant article, if relevant. Warrant article proponents must identify who will be impacted by their warrant article among town residents and businesses, and the extent of their outreach to such residents and businesses. Proponents must describe how they have sought to accommodate the concerns of town staff, residents, and businesses in the drafting and redrafting of their warrant article. Proponents must provide an estimate of the financial impact on the town, or if an estimate is not possible, a narrative of what any cost would include, and an estimate of the impact on staff resources. Proponents must be able to articulate why they believe that their warrant article is relevant to Brookline issues and conditions. So that's my proposed Select Board Warrant Article Requirements document. I'd like other board members to give me their inputs, their comments, and at some point in the future, we should bring this up and vote on whether we want to include this as, in the package that we give to warrant article proponents before they come before the board, so. Secondly, BFAC. You probably read about BFAC, the Brookline Finance Advisory Committee Report, in the tab. Someone raised their hand back there. Apparently, one person read it. So the BFAC report has made a big splash in the local media, and it has not been a positive or useful splash. So I want to set up a process for addressing the BFAC recommendations in three Select Board meetings, beginning with the meeting following the Audit Committee Report on February 18th. There will be some overlap in the three meetings, but they will give us an opportunity to address the report from the standpoint of the large global issues raised, and also focus on specific recommendations. In the process, I hope to give the community a better understanding of the town's financial condition and challenges than appeared in the media or even in parts of the report. I would appreciate any comments or suggestions from Select Board members before we start this process. The first meeting will consider the issues raised by BFAC related to the town maintaining its AAA bond rating and improving its financial processes. And in the Select Board paper or document I selected, there are numbers for recommendations I think would come under that. You may have other suggestions, et cetera. The second meeting will consider the issues related to the town's financial and other decision-making. And the third meeting will consider governance and resource issues raised by BFAC. So, again, I'd like any comments that Select Board members have. In, I guess, two weeks, we'll start the process of going through the report in a systematic way and try to figure out what is useful and what, you know, may not be feasible, and, you know, make use of the recommendations of the committee as we go forward, so. Now, the big, the main event. I am pleased to report that during our executive session this evening, the Select Board unanimously voted to adopt the Newberry Zoning Committee's recommendations to approve a preliminary agreement with Welltower on the development of the Newberry College campus on Fisher Hill. The agreement was reached after extensive and productive negotiations between the Welltower project team and the town's Newberry Campus Zoning Committee, including its negotiating and design subcommittees and working groups. The agreement incorporates three main components. First, the development of the East Side campus into a 160-unit senior housing complex, combining independent living, assisted living, and skilled memory care. Two, the strategic acquisition of the West Side of the campus by the town for $14.8 million to be used initially for various municipal purposes, and in the long run for a municipal or school use that will be determined after a robust public process that will include the Select Board, the school committee, staff, members of the town boards and commissions, residents, and other community stakeholders. And three, the development of 18 units of mixed-income affordable housing at the Holland Hall site by New Atlantic Development, a Boston-based developer of affordable housing with a great reputation, with Welltower providing a partial financial guarantee of completion of the project. All of these matters will be incorporated into a final memorandum of agreement between the town and Welltower. The MOA will be a binding document between the town and the developer, and will contain further relevant details on the project. I will briefly summarize them this evening, but we also have posted on the Newberry webpage on the town's website, a document explaining the MOA in more detail, or at least the preliminary provisions of the MOA. It is our intent to file the necessary warrant articles for town meeting approval this spring and to place a question on the annual town election ballot on May 5, seeking to exclude the cost of debt to acquire the West Campus property from the limitations imposed by Proposition 2.5. Select Board Member Nancy Heller will shortly discuss the process that got us to this point and the steps going forward, and our real estate advisors, McCall and Almy, will provide additional detail on the favorable terms under which the town will be purchasing the West Campus. Here are some of the positive benefits that form the basis of the Select Board's support for this project. The development of senior housing that will provide substantial new tax revenue to the town with minimal impact on town and school services. The ability to purchase land at a favorable price that will create future strategic value to the town while providing some immediate municipal use of the academic building on site. Construction of badly-needed mixed-income affordable housing on Fisher Hill in close proximity to the Welltower project. Donation of an easement to the town to preserve mature trees lining Fisher Avenue that are on Welltower's property. The preservation of the historic Mitten House as part of the senior housing development. Welltower's commitment to pursue sustainable design of the new facility, including a commitment to avoid use of fossil fuels for heating and cooling. Job opportunities for town residents and other similar benefits, and many other community benefits. We look forward to engaging with the community over the next several weeks to explain in greater detail the benefits of this project to the community and the approval process that will be presented to the voters in town meeting this spring. Ms. Heller?
Thank you. You did an admirable job of summing up the project. I would add that the committee, the zoning committee, has been meeting over the last several months. We established two subcommittees. The Negotiation Subcommittee, which had seven members, and the Architectural Subcommittee, which had three architects. Steve Hyken, who is the Chair of the Planning Board, Derek Choi, who is an architect and Fisher Hill resident, and Carlos Reduejo, I hope I got his name correctly. He's also a member of the, he's a member of the Advisory Committee, and an architect and a member of, resident Fisher Hill. On the Negotiation Subcommittee, we had a working group of Neil Roschinsky and Paul Sainer, who are here in the audience tonight, and Janet Feerman, who's out of the country. And these folks did a fabulous job, along with Roger Ludd, who, of the Housing Advisory Board, who negotiated the deal on the affordable housing and the inclusionary zoning piece. We have done this at a rapid speed. It was important to the developer that we, that we not drag this out. They have a lot of money invested in the project and the town, and the sooner they can get going, the less it will cost them in the long run, and the better project we'll all have. And I have to say, I think we did a fantastic job. It can be done. This is probably the quickest development of this sort in Brookline, and I think we've proved to ourselves that it can be done. We still have the memorandum of agreement to, you know, negotiate, and that will be part of what we present in the warrant articles to town meeting before March 5th, but I'm confident that we can get there. I want to thank the developers, who have been terrific. Let me just give you a little insight into the working of the Architectural Subcommittee. They met on several occasions. The project architects from Welltower would come to the meetings prepared with their big models. In the early days, their models were made out of clay, and in about the second or third meeting, the architects on the Subcommittee, who were wondering whether they had been heard, took out their pen knives and chopped pieces off from the clay model. That, I think, sent the message. The architects from the, from the project did respond, and the project massing came down. We had a financial analysis by Pam McKinney. There's a report of hers online, but she did make a public presentation. And so we're very comfortable that this project is viable financially, but not too rich or fat, as the saying may go. So I would like to ask Lauren Donahue and Sandy Tierney to give us some more information about how we arrived at the price of $14.8 million for the West Side. I know they've done some analysis. They are real estate experts and have been working with us.
Thank you, Nancy. Can you guys hear me okay? My name is Lauren Donahue. I'm with McCall and Almy. So as some of you may know, we have been advising the town on its pursuit of the Newberry College property.
Close your mic. You're practically happy to eat it. That feels right. That's good.
So we've been advising the town on its pursuit of the Newberry College property since early 2019. So we just wanted to give a little bit of color and context to the pricing that we arrived at. You know, fundamentally, we've spent a lot of time thinking about the use and the pricing, both for the town as well as for a variety of other competitive users for the property. Since the beginning of this engagement, it's been our sense that the highest and best use of this property is most likely in its existing educational and institutional configuration, taking advantage of the improvements that are on the property. There were a couple of interesting factors in Newberry's closure that led to them giving guidance to their brokerage team, which was Colliers at the time, that impacted the sale. So they prevented their brokerage team from selling the campus in pieces or subject to typical contingencies, and we're going to kind of come back to this when we talk about the deal the town is getting on the West Side. But along the way, you know, we think these decisions limited the range of interested parties and somewhat depressed the pricing. And in the end, the town's real estate consultant would also share our view that a sale of the campus in parts would likely yield a greater price than sort of the bulk retail sale that we looked at. So at this point, the town's being offered an opportunity to purchase just the West Parcel. The West Parcel is what we're calling it. It's really four tax parcels. It's about 3.13 acres, and it's improved by two buildings. One of those buildings is in very good shape. That's the academic building. It's about 30,000 square feet. The second building is West Hall, which is in reasonably good condition. So the manner in which we would approach valuing a property like this is typically by looking at sales comparables. And so we did that here, and we arrived at sort of a range of value. You know, to Raoul's point, this is also sort of art and science, but we would expect the overall range of value for this property to land around probably high 17, $17.7 million or so. And that's for a not-for-profit educational user. Again, you know, highest and best user for this property, there's very little land in the greater Boston area generally, and there's certainly very little move-in-ready academic-type space. So we looked at it both in terms of a blended square footage for the building, which are the two I mentioned. There are also two parking lots on the site, which you could very easily imagine trading for, you know, numbers in the low seven figures. It does remain our belief that the highest and best use for this campus is educational in nature, and that a tax-exempt educational user would be in a position to pay, you know, the pricing that we're talking about. So in conclusion, I mean, I think the town's $14.8 million price is a meaningful discount from what an educational user would be likely to come in and pay. And we've pushed hard on this number. Again, you know, we've been looking at this property for the better part of a year. We've been speaking with Welltower for the better part of eight months. Sandy and I, McCall and Almy, have sat in on probably two dozen meetings with the parties. And we've also spoken with the town's financial consultant, who's indicated that the project at this point is at the, you know, sort of low end of acceptable range, bordering on unacceptable range of return on costs. So we feel pretty confident that we've squeezed as much value as we can here out of this. Based on our sense of what's market, the $14.8 million that the town is being offered the opportunity to purchase the West Side for probably represents a 15% to 20% discount on market. We value that around $2.9 million of benefit that the town has negotiated here in this acquisition, and certainly less than what we think the value would be to sort of the highest and best user on the open marketplace.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. I would just add one, make one thing clear about that, and that is that the highest and best use of a nonprofit educational use, user, would be, would fall, that user would fall under the Dover Amendment, which is Amendment to Mass General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 3. And it allows such a user, and also religious users, nonprofit users, to override, in essence, the zoning of the town, and things like setback and height and massing, et cetera. So in that context, I believe we are getting a very good deal on the East Side. We're getting a very good, high-quality product, and it will bring us significant tax revenue as well.
I was just going to add that point that I overlooked in my statement, which was that that user also most likely is not paying real estate taxes, which is a big piece of what would allow them to in turn pay that higher-level pricing. So it was a point well raised, Nancy.
I would like to ask whether Roger Ludd had any other thoughts about the affordable housing piece? You want to describe the, it's a complex process.
You're on the spot.
Yeah, I'm putting you on the spot, Roger. Sorry, but I know you can handle it. You have come up with an excellent alternatives and scheme for the affordable housing. You've put a huge amount of time into it. You've dragged our architects up there separately, I might add, so you didn't violate open meeting law. And you've really worked very hard, so I'm just wondering whether you had anything to add to what Bernard had said about the affordable housing.
I think it was covered, was covered well. The Housing Advisory Board began with the inclusionary zoning bylaw as it exists and attempted to come up with affordable housing preference for this 18 affordable units at Holland Road, with the constraint of the overall financial projections for the project. As was mentioned, they are, they are very tight, and so that created some limitations on what the affordable housing could produce. But we are, we are looking at a proposal for a part of the Newberry campus that will produce 18 affordable units of the middle to, moderate to middle-income range, and that, those 18 units are 15% of the 120 units that the bylaw would cover for the total units in the main project. And so we have achieved that option, and we think a good set of steps and a good vehicle and an affordable housing developer that seems able and willing to deliver this end result. The, this project and this option would require, as I think was mentioned, a zoning article to pass for, for that Holland Road parcel. And in the event that any, anything were to disrupt this very good plan that the Housing Advisory Board has expressed its preference for, there's a fallback option that would allow 6.5-plus million dollars to be earmarked through the trust fund for the Brookline Housing Authority to do some, some of their priority development in a senior housing location at the Colonel Floyd Apartments in near Coolidge Corner. So we've got a preferred option. I think everybody thinks that it, it looks like it's got lots of positives, and for the, for the sake of accomplishing the larger Newberry project and all the benefits that the Chair has described, Select Person Green, we have a fallback that hopefully will allow Town Meeting to find something good for the affordable housing piece of this larger plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just clarify one thing that someone may have picked up. 160 units of housing here, but only 120 are being used in the calculation of affordable units, because 40 of the units are memory care units, which don't apply to this.
Yes, they're referred to.
Skilled nursing, memory care.
There's 40 memory care. They're referred to as units, but they aren't really housing units in the sense of the senior living and the assisted living, which are housing units in the sense of having a separate cooking facility and bathrooms and sleeping areas. The memory care is more of a, I don't say institutional setting, but it's a, it's a unit to provide specialized intense service support for folks with Alzheimer's.
Would include bathrooms, but not kitchens.
Yes, that's the key difference.
Key difference.
Yes.
Also, I think we need to remind people that these affordable units, condominiums, will be affordable in perpetuity.
Yes, they will, and that the town will, will, in the normal course of events, run a, run a public lottery with applicants and a pool of, a pool of qualified people who need these units and subject to all of the fair housing requirements.
And one other thing I'd like to stress, thank you, Roger. One other thing I'd like to stress about the West Side is, you mentioned it, is that we would need to have a debt exclusion. The town is not a nimble buyer, and that we don't, we're not allowed to sock away money to, for these kinds of purchases, so we need to go to the voters, which is a good thing. And we will do that on, I hope, on May 5th. For a debt exclusion. And given the relatively small amount of money involved, it would be a very small amount of tax hike for single-family condos.
Any other comments from the board? Public comment period. Mr. Oni, you've signed up.
Larry Oni, and I live on Marshall Street. So there was this headline in the tab, "No More Business as Usual: Report Details, Town's Growing Structural Deficit." There are some of us who are deeply concerned and are going to become activated about another structural deficit that we have. And the structural deficit that we have is, at present, there is no opportunity for citizens in Brookline to have a two-way conversation with the five members of the Select Board present. And because of this lack of a two-way conversation and a meaningful dialogue, that there are unintended consequences that lead to a trust deficit about the way the Select Board is perceived. It creates sometimes political chaos, social chaos, tension, friction. So the proposal, what I'm asking you to consider, and I would appreciate if you'd get back to me about this, is that there would be an opportunity, maybe every six weeks, for all five members of the Select Board to meet in an open meeting, there's no open meeting law problem with this, with citizens who want to have a two-way conversation, dialogue with the Select Board. Right now, we're limited to, you know, three minutes of public comment or buttonholing Select Board members individually, okay? And then when one does that, they may get five different stories about something. So the, this structural deficit, we would like you to come back with a proposal. So the, this structural deficit, we would like you to come back with a proposal about whether or not you will allow and create a situation where all five members of the Select Board would meet with a group of citizens for an hour, hour and a half, maybe every six weeks.
Let me just say about the structural deficit, we're supposed to have a structural deficit. That's what Proposition 2 and 1/2 is all about. And every year, we don't have a deficit at the end of the year. So let's just be-
Well, I'm talking about the governmental structural deficit, okay? The other thing I just want to say is, and maybe this could be put on the website, okay? Now, some people perceive this as dead words on a page, but there's an organizational chart which has citizens at the top of the chart. And we have a situation right now where there is no opportunity for citizens to engage in a two-way conversation with the five Select Boards present. No opportunity. And the other thing I just quickly want to say, and I appreciate you allowing me to say this, that because of that, many hard-working public servants in town have to then clean up a mess that has been created because there has not been a two-way conversation with the Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, miscellaneous items. Oh, Ms. Fraley.
Good evening. Regina Fraley from South Brookline. Alyssa Dennis was supposed to come. She's en route. I think this was scheduled for about 7 o'clock.
What?
The public comment. That's what she wrote me, anyway.
Six, six o'clock.
Yeah, my-
In any event, let me speak for her then. As you may well know, blasting is supposed to start very soon in South Brookline at Hancock Village. We're really profoundly, seriously worried about the impact on our gas pipes in particular. I think the water pipes are at risk as well because of their fragile nature. They're also 85 years old. But they, they'll only flood us if they're broken into any more than they have been. The gas pipes can kill us, and we're looking for the Board of Suckmen to step in and say, "Get the gas pipes replaced first." It's not about stopping the Hancock Village, it's not about stopping the blasting, it's about stopping it just long enough to do the gas pipes. And I, with this weather, there's no reason it couldn't be done as soon as possible. This is a matter of life and death. That's how seriously everyone on my street is taking it. Believe me, it's the only topic of conversation. People are very nervous, to say the least. I myself have bought a special insurance for the gas pipes to my house and the, and the water pipes to my house. It's a separate kind of thing that your, your insurance doesn't usually cover. But most people haven't done that. And that just, that won't stop it. If, if the main blast happens, it's not going to stop the bursts, it's not going to stop an eruption such as happened at Cypress Street. I brought this to your attention repeatedly. I've shown you that even the day after you grant, you approved the contract, another oak came down. Ever Source came on that, there were only three blocks. On that block, Ever Source came and announced that 13 more should come down, and the town agreed to do one more. So 14 in all on one block of oaks were taken down, or in the process of it. We, we're desperate. We're really desperate and very, very nervous about this, and we need you to, I've spoken to the fire superintendent who's in charge of this. They're going to do a mini, in March, they're going to do a mini test explosion. That's no way to do it. That's no way to do it. It needs to stop, and please do these pipes. You have, you're going to have a lot on your conscience if anything happens to people, you really will. And I have, I got very aware of how, how fire departments and blasting work together because I was very helpful in Waltham on a project that involved blasting. And I can tell you, the fire department there stopped, gave a stop order and demanded because they were worried even more about the environment in particular, as, which for sanctuary would be an example of why that's a worry. But because it was on top of a mountain, they were very worried about the little houses down below. And they stopped everything until there were extra protective measures, meshing, all kind, ditch with a rock, I forget, there's a special name for it, a, a rock wall that prevented it from causing flooding elsewhere into the conservation area. Whatever it is, what needs to be done first in common sense is to take care of the infrastructure first. Knowing that as, whatever they do, there's going to be enormous, even the fire department said, heavy, heavy trucks coming into that area along Ashville Street, where there are also leaks, I might add. You're putting the, the whole street, the whole area at risk every time, as long as we have the, the old pipes. And we are on record for multiple dozens of leaks on my street alone, three short blocks. Please help us. Please do that. And I speak for every Town Meeting member and everyone on Reston Road. Thank you.
So, Mr. Franco, you have a comment you want to make?
I thought the Town Administrator or you would speak to it, but we've heard your, your, your comments before, Regina, and out of your, your neighbors. As this board has expressed in the past, we have, we're committed to trying to get gas infrastructure, old gas infrastructure replaced with infrastructure that doesn't leak and that is reliable. Unfortunately, the state, the Department of Public Utilities and the law is not on our side to try and force a, a public utility to update their infrastructure. And I know that the town is in conversations with, with Grid and our other utilities in town to make appropriate improvements based on evidence that we've seen and problems that we've, we've, we've come across. So we hear you, and we're working on it.
I just was here last week when you voted $13 million for Washington Street, and I believe Raul asked about the gas pipes. Yes, National Grid is going to replace the gas pipes as part of that deal. You can get a guarantee for Washington Street, and you can't for a, a neighborhood that's had all these leaks, when proportionately more leaks than any Washington Street has ever had. You, it really isn't something to gamble with. This is about blowing up houses and people in it.
So I'll just point out, there's no evidence that a house is going to be blown up as a result of any project, but I take your-
There was no evidence on Cypress Street either, and the fire chief came here and told-
We're not going to get into a back-and-forth dialogue.
All right, but I'm going to repeat what the fire chief said. You cannot do an absolute correlation, absolute correlation, proof, but you can do indicators. Even about Cypress Street, he testified here that he cannot do it as an absolute proof, but he can tell you that's probably what happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, question of approving the following Select Board minutes. Monday, January 27, 2020, that was our emergency meeting to vote with respect to the Warren Articles that we needed to send to the Attorney General. And then Tuesday, January 28, 2020. Anyone have any edits, corrections to these? And everyone is there. Actually, no, everyone wasn't on the 27th. So let's just do the 27th first. On favor, Mr. Franco.
Aye. Of the 27th, or?
Yeah, the 27th, the emergency meeting. Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Were you there?
I was there, but it was the-
On the phone?
Pardon me?
On the phone?
This was a special, kind of a meeting.
Yeah, I was there.
Oh, okay.
I was there.
I wasn't there.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Heller, that wasn't it. So Ms. Heller?
I'm glad, I'm flattered that you-
Confused us.
Well, people confused me and Ben. So get used to it. Ms. Heller?
Yes, aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Obstand.
Hi, Mr. Fernandez.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Tuesday, January 28, 2020, on favor, Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, next, question of accepting a grant from the City of Boston in the amount of $60,000 to support the Emergency Preparedness Buddies Program. The office, the town, I guess, seeks to appropriate $60,000 of awarded funds into UASI EP Buddies, which is a federal program, as I understand, that's implemented through Boston. This will support program goals to assist the elderly and adults with access and functional needs, prepare for and respond to emergency situations. Do we have anyone speaking on that that can sort of give a little more information for the public?
I'm not aware. Is there anybody here to speak on the emergency management grant? I'm sorry, if you want to hold off on it, it's fine with me, because I think the board needs to hear it.
Let's hold it to a future meeting.
Because I don't see, I don't recall that the material that we had went into much detail in terms of what it is.
Well, but on the other hand, we're, it's a grant, we're being awarded, we're accepting the grant, so there's probably not, I mean, I agree that we ought to have more detail for the public, but I think we can accept it and maybe discuss it next time, just as a discussion point. I wouldn't want us to-
Miss a deadline.
Miss a, miss any kind of deadline on accepting this thing?
Is there a deadline that we've been?
I only dare.
Okay. I mean, the problem is, is that, you know, many of these grants come through the federal government with strings attached, and we need to at least, you know, ask questions as to what those strings are. You know, this came up last week with another UAS, UASI grant. So, you know, and there's nothing in the material that suggests that there is a deadline, so I, I, I move that we hold it.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Okay, next, question of accepting a grant from the National Association of County and City Health Officials in the amount of $7,500. The office seeks the awarded grant funds to be appropriated for the Medical Reserve Corps.
This is the same office. I would, I would request that we again hold this until a future meeting.
Okay. Next, question of authorization to execute and approve a lease purchase of a total of $3,825,500 for communications equipment for public safety, police and fire, with Motorola Solutions, Inc., with an annual cost of $830,313.29 for five years, with an interest rate of 2.79%. Mr. Janikakis.
Thank you, David Janikakis, Chief Park Guard Officer. This is for the police and fire departments. It is a total revamp of their communication systems, the towers, the radios. This is something that was approved in Town Meeting, and this is the, the first year, actually, payment. But it is a, over five years, we'll be paying the three-point, for the $3.8 million. It is literally from across the street in the dispatch all the way through the townwide infrastructure. It's sorely needed, I believe, I've been told, it's updated by a couple of years, so that they're looking forward to having this update from the, all different police, fire vehicles, all the way through the, the infrastructure that makes them, them work, the radios, the, all the, the computer devices that are in the various vehicles.
Okay. Any questions?
I'd like to just say one, one thing. How did you manage the magic of getting a rate of 2.79%? Now, you probably work with our treasurer, is my guess, but still, that is a fantastic rate.
Well, thank you. The, it does also reflect the town's bond rating. Every time the, you know, the different banks and such come to me, they're, that first thing they'll comment is, "Well, Brookline has the AAA bond rate."
AAA bond rate, it means everything.
Makes it that much easier for me to, to get that, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, this is a tax exempt lease purchase, so there is a Lessee resolution, which I think we have to vote on, not, you know, just approving it.
Right, basically, it's part of the document that I presented in the, the documents that, for the board to do the Lessee resolution.
Okay. So I'm going to read the resolution so that they have our official imprimatur on, on this deal. Determination of Need, be resolved by the governing board of Lessee as follows. Determination, one, determination of need. The governing body of Lessee has determined a true and very real need exists for the acquisition of the equipment or other personal property described in the lease schedule dated as of February 11, 2020, between Town of Brookline, Massachusetts, Lessee, and Motorola Solutions, Inc., Lesor, and subject to the master equipment lease purchase agreement dated as of February 11, 2020, between Lessee and Lesor. Approval and Authorization. The governing body of Lessee has determined that the lease substantially in the form presented to this meeting is in the best interest of the Lessee for the acquisition of such equipment or other personal property, and the governing board hereby approves the entering into of the lease by the Lessee and hereby designates and authorizes the following persons to execute and deliver the lease on Lessee's behalf with such changes thereto as such person deems appropriate, and any related documents, including any escrow agreement necessary to the consummation of the transaction contemplated by the lease authorized by the lease, period. And then authorize individuals to, to accept. I know it may sound like that's unnecessary, but best practice is when we have a resolution against the board to actually vote that resolution. So, yes.
I have a, a technical question. So when we do lease purchases, in other cases, it's a 36-month lease. I noticed here it's a 60-month lease. So is that a meaningful difference?
I think it's the, because of the size of the lease, those tend to be, you know, $5,000 to $700,000 for the overall purchase. This one, $3.8 million. Financially, it was made the decision to spread, and we locked in the, the lease rate for those five years. So no matter what happens three, four years from now, we're, we're still going to stay at that. So I think that was the, really a financial decision, sort of spread it out over five years.
Thank you for the clarification.
Good. So on favor of the Lessee-
I have a brief question.
Yeah.
To your knowledge, is there significant training involved in getting up to speed on this new equipment, or is it, is it very similar to what our police, fire, and others have been using before, but just maybe not great?
Scott, do you know? I can have Scott Wilder here from the Police Department. He would know that detail.
Good evening, Scott Wilder, Brookline Police Department, Director of Technology and Communications. Great question. Actually, the, the equipment itself will be very familiar to both police and fire. There really is, other than it being much more than the, the equipment we're using now is basically been blessed by Motorola as end of life, so we're sort of in a critical situation. But the, but the, the infrastructure, the portable radios, the mobile radios and the cruises will all be very familiar to the offices.
I move approval of number one, authorization to execute and approve a lease purchase of a total of $3,825,500 of communications equipment for public safety, police and fire, with Motorola Solutions, Inc., with an annual cost of $830,313.29 for five years, with an interest rate of 2.79%. And approval of the Lessee resolution I previously read. On favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, question of approving contract between the Town of Brookline and Acme Waterproofing for the work of the water gar, garage slab repairs in the amount of $486,760. Mr. Giggly, you again.
Me again.
Tell us why you're coming back on this slab repair.
Tony Giggly with the Building Department. The last time I was here was for an award of the contract so that the, the vendor could get, secure the bonds and insurance for the contract. And this is the actual contract at this point, and the amount is $486,760, and I think I included the bid tabulation sheet. Just for a point of information, the Building Commission took this up a few minutes ago, half hour, 45 minutes ago, and approved the contract. And if, if you, if this board approves the contract, I would issue the notice to proceed in the very near future.
Any questions? On favor, question of approving the contract between the Town of Brookline and Acme Waterproofing for the work of the water garage slab repairs in the amount of $486,760. Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, a question of approving a parade permit for the Boston Marathon Jimmy Fund Walk on Sunday, October- Sunday, October 4, 2020. Is anyone going to speak on that, or do we need to?
Is there anybody here from the Boston Athletic Association? Okay. You know, our assistant was on vacation beginning of Friday, so there could have been some miscommunication, apparently, with some of these requests. You know, I, I think it's pretty straightforward. We've done it every year, so I think in the interest of-
With no issues.
In the interest of time, I, I would recommend the board approve it without presentation from the VAA.
All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Question of approving a charge to the Surveillance Technology and Military Type Equipment Study Committee to study the issues associated with the town's acquisition, use and promotion of smart form, smartphone apps and other software, and make recommendations on policy and, policies and best practices. So you may recall on December, on October 15 last year, the Police Safety App came before the board in the midst of a lot of controversy, and the board voted to, to require the Police Department to cease use of that app, at least until we address some of the questions that have been raised by people in town. And we voted to send the, the question of whether we should use this app, what conditions under which we could use it, and other issues related to that. For example, you know, risks that we're taking when we enter into any type of software agreement, whether for, for, for cost or, or free software. And Ms. Hamilton agreed to prepare a charge to the committees in order to focus the committee's attention on what the board was concerned with, with respect to the police app, and she did, and the committee at its last meeting took up the charge and made some edits, just a few edits, and sent it to the select board for our approval. So, anyone have any questions on the charge, or is process thinking?
I'll just say that I had help from one of the members of your committee, so I, it was a team effort.
Yeah. He's not here, so I'm giving you all the credit. That was a team effort.
So, I've read this, and I realize that, that paragraph two talks about, and my interest is in, in, in looking at adopting these systems, is whether or not we can get a, some information about violence and potential plans of people who want to do violence in our schools especially. And I think, I'm just, I don't know whether this, the question is whether or not this get, this paragraph gets to that. And I don't know how, I'm not so sure how you would structure it otherwise, but I think maybe we might try to find out if there were any apps in use that actually did prevent, if we can know that, violence in the schools. I don't know if we can know that, because I don't know if there are any instances, but...
But you rarely have a, you know, baseline and then like, because either something happens or it doesn't.
Right, right.
But in two, two, it says the degree of effectiveness of reporting systems and practice. So we were trying to allow the committee to look at other communities using other technology and how effective they've felt those mechanisms to be.
But, okay, well, but they're looking at the effectiveness of the reporting and not the effectiveness in preventing violence or enabling police to respond more quickly. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I, I would say that's kind of splitting a hair. Every, all of this is based on reports, so how do you know that something was prevented? Because somebody reports on it and it doesn't happen. That's the only way you'd know that something was stopped.
Okay, well, let's see what comes out of it. I'm just, you know, I'm just, as I say, I'm, I understand privacy issues, I'm concerned about them as well, but I'm also really concerned about the violence that happens in our schools and against our children, and, or even in the community, in malls or wherever, you know, and I think that's, in some ways, a greater danger to us than, than privacy. I mean, that involves the loss of life.
Well, I mean, those are the things that we'll be looking at. I mean, no one wants to have a situation of violence in schools or anywhere else, but, you know, you have to balance that against, you know, how often does that happen? And, you know, what type of restrictions of privacy you're willing to put up with for relatively infrequent events? If that's, if that is the case, I mean, you know, at least in Massachusetts, that, that seems to be the case. If we're living in some other states, maybe, you know, the risk could be much higher, but, but, you know, the point is, the point here is to, is to just study and see what, you know, what we know. Do we actually know that various methods are effective, or are they just, you know, window dressing that makes us feel that it doesn't really help out in preventing violence or whatever?
I just have one note, which is, what I'm reading in the, in the first paragraph and what we're voting on includes the, includes other software apps, smartphone apps and other software, but number one, and it's, it doesn't include, it just says smartphone apps, I'd like for it to include other software, so not all of the, the software that we might be concerned about comes in app form. Take, for instance, recent New York Times article on a company called Clearview AI, which many police offices, police departments are now, I think, unwisely contracting with, which allows, which scrapes photos from across the internet and allows for photo matching. I encourage you all to check it out, but it's really scary stuff. And so I just, I just think, one, to be consistent, and two, to make sure that the, that the committee fully understands this charge.
Actually, that was inadvertent omission, because in the first, the introductory paragraph, line three and four, it says "and other software," so we'll just add "and other software" to the, to the first paragraph. Is that's okay with people?
And of course, we've got to ban facial recognition being used in town now, so that's an additional backstop, but the point is we'll take.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay. I move approval of the charge to the Surveillance Committee. I'm calling it the Surveillance Committee because Surveillance Technology and Military Type Equipment Study Committee, even though I may have contributed to that name, it's kind of on will be.
It's a dry out for an acronym. We rearranged the letters.
Anyway, all in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, next. Question of approving the following temporary all alcohol beverages, non-sales license to the Lars Anderson Auto Museum at 15 Newton Street, first for a Saturday, February 15, 2020, post-wedding party from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. I guess it was just one. Any questions?
Oh, there's a February 27 for a retirement party.
Yeah, later. Okay. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. And, so there are, there are more than, is more than one. February 27 for a retirement party from 5:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. Any questions about these two events at Lars Anderson Museum? Do you think they're all in order in terms of paperwork and all?
The paperwork is in order in the Police Department. Sees no reason to deny either of his temporary licenses.
Okay. So all in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Question of approving the following temporary all alcohol beverage sales license, plural, I guess, to Pine Manor College at 400 Heath Street, February 27, 2020, for a retirement party from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. March 21, 2020, for a 60th birthday party from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. March 28, 2020, for a wedding from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. And a web, and a wedding from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Like a two, I'm sorry, April 4, 2020, for a wedding from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Any questions with respect to those four events?
Mr. Tre, we can attach a condition that enforced TIPS certifications be submitted for all four of these events. The certifications we expire, we received expired on the, in January of this year.
Okay. Thank you for picking that up.
Aside from that, the paperwork appears to be in order, and the Police Department sees no reason to deny these applications.
Yeah, okay. So, now how, how does that work? Because the first one is coming up, I guess, February 27. So they have time to get their certifications updated. Okay. So, I move approval of the temporary all alcohol beverage sales licenses to Pine Manor College, subject to getting their TIPS certification updated by the date of the event, earliest one being February 27, 2020. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Administrator?
Yes.
Are we going to, I guess you'll, you'll tell or instruct, I guess Tiffany to follow up on that.
I will. I may have a moment, yeah.
Question of approving a temporary wine and malt beverages sales license to Allium Market to be held on February, on Friday, February 14, 2020, for cheese class from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at 1330 Beacon Street. Any problems with this license?
The paperwork appears to be in order, and the Police Department sees no reason to deny the application.
Good. So all in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay. Authorization to hire Recreation, Ms. Jackson. Tell us what you want to do.
Hello, good evening. Hello, good evening, members of the Select Board. I am Lee Jackson, the Recreation Director, and I'm here tonight to ask for your authorization to hire for our rec leader. This rec leader position is responsible for our summer camp programs, and as you may know, we have a very large summer camp program serving the residents of Brookline that we're very proud of, and we are asking tonight for your authorization to hire so we can run another excellent, wonderful experience for our Brookline youth.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, I have one comment. So your previous recreation leader left because the commute was a bear. Okay. This is one of the costs that the town incurs because of the high cost of housing in town, and I mention that because earlier today we talked about an affordable mixed-use housing project that's coming up on Fisher Hill, and although this is probably, that's probably going to be geared more to possibly older citizens than, than would be working for the town, it's a type of project that we need to encourage so that people like your recreation leader can afford to live in the town that they work, and we don't lose them with all the cost that that involves because they can't put up with the commute. So I just say that, just to keep on, on everyone's mind, the fact that affordable housing is a really important issue, not because it's, you know, the right thing to do or any of that, because it's costing us huge amounts of money and, and costing us in many other ways.
And great people.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, let's see, any other? I also note that we're no longer using ProDiversity Network, but now we're using diversityjob.com.
Diversityjob.com, yes.
Ms. Braga discussed the problems that we had with ProDiversity Network, and hopefully this new entity will be much more effective in terms of providing us a diversity of applicants.
I agree. I've just been updated on that as well, so I appreciate that comment.
Okay. Any further discussion? I move approval of authorization to fill the position of Recreation Leader for the Department of Public Works in the Recreation Division. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Mission of public surgeon. What, what are we talking about here? Leaf blower policy.
Before I talk about leaf blowers, I'd like to just say that we have not taken over the Recreation Division as a division of Public Works, as you just said.
Oh, sorry.
At least not to my knowledge.
So it says on paper.
I know, well, at least not to my knowledge.
I just read.
I don't need another division at this point. We're going to talk about leaf blowers, but if, if I may, just clarify a comment that was made earlier. We have been in negotiations with National Grid regarding the replacement of the gas main on Russett Road. We have been dealing with them now for probably two months and are very close to reaching an agreement to get them to replace the main and expedite the replacement of the main. We have scheduled a meeting this Thursday at 11:00 a.m. in my office. We're going to be talking about not only the gas main on Russett Road, but a lot of other projects that are going on, or will be going on in Brookline. So, Grid so far has agreed to, number one, put the replacement of the main back in their capital program where it was not six months ago, and has now agreed to expedite the replacement of the main, and it just, the only thing left now is to work out the details with them and to try to get it done sooner than later. So we're working at that, you know, doing everything we can to make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you make sure that the Select Board is kept up to date on the developments as they go forward?
Yes.
Ms. Friday.
As you know, we had put out a paving, paving contract for Russett Road last fall, and we put the paving contract on hold pending resolution of, of the gas issues and the tree issues. It kind of looks like now we may have to suspend that paving contract because of the time limits involved, it, in terms of the delay, and if that's the case, then we will wait until the tree work is completed, the gas main work is completed, and it's an opportune time then to go in and resurface the road. So, may not happen until, until towards the end of the year. Now, the main point that I wanted to talk about tonight is leaf blowers, the gift that keeps on giving, as far as we're concerned, but over the last 10 years, the town has convened numerous committees, completed an exhaustive analysis, changed operating procedures, created an outreach program, increased fines, rewritten bylaws associated with use of gas-powered leaf blowers. The last report published in 2016 by the Moderators Committee on Leaf Blowers was the result of over 16 public meetings and research regarding the use, noise, health effects, enforcement, communications, best practices and climate impacts of leaf blowers. This effort led to bylaw and enforcement changes. The current bylaw, Article 8.31, is a balance that limits all leaf blower use to equipment under 67 decibels and prohibits the use of gas-powered leaf blowers except between March 15 and May 15, and between October 1 and December 31. It limits hours of operation to 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Saturdays, Sundays and holidays. Parcels less than 7,500 square feet can have no more than two leaf blowers used simultaneously. Enforcement is now pertinent to both property owners and landscape contractors, if applicable. In the fall, Warren Articles 23 and 24 were submitted by Mr. Don Warner, who was here with us tonight, that proposed a ban on the use of gas-powered leaf blowers completely and restriction on the use of any type of leaf blower on sidewalks or ways contiguous to public property. Through the public process, great frustration was voiced regarding disregard for the current bylaw. The Department of Public Works discussed a series of recommended steps to increase compliance prior to further restrictions or changes in the town's bylaw. To that end, the department recommends adoption of the attached regulations that will enforce the provisions of the bylaw and further protect the health and safety of our residents. In addition, the department recommends the issuance of an annual In addition, the department recommends the issuance of an annual permit that will require private landscape companies to provide current contact information and sign that they have read, understood, and will adhere to the bylaw and its regulations. Most complaints to date are directed at private landscape contractors. Pursuant to Article 8.31.4, the Commissioner of Public Works has the authority to promulgate regulations to implement the provisions of this bylaw, subject to the approval of the select board. In an effort to further educate both the public and commercial landscape companies and improve compliance associated with this bylaw, the Department of Public Works respectfully requests that the select board review and approve the attached leaf blower regulations and annual permit with a fee of $25 for commercial and private landscapers to operate gas-powered leaf blowers as part of their businesses in the town of Brookline. I would invite Mr. Warner to address the board at this time with any additional comments he would like to make. And in addition, both Aaron Galentine and I are here to answer any questions that you may have and hopefully bring some closure to this never-ending issue. So, Mr. Warner.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Don Warner. I live at 45 Bilbo Crescent. I first want to start by thanking the commissioner for developing this new enforcement plan. And really what it is, is an enforcement plan. There's no changes to the regulations per se. Brief history, the regulations have been in effect since 2016. They're comprehensive, but they don't fully address enforcement. Since landscape companies know that they are not likely to be cited for violations, many are not complying with the regulations. It is very difficult to enforce the regulations if you don't have a list of the landscape companies doing business in Brookline. DPW's new enforcement plan addresses the problem by, number one, better politicizing of the regulations; number two, increasing the number of people responding to violations. And these are current employees that, so no new employees would be, would be brought on board, but these are employees that are out in the field anyway, and if a violation is called in, they can get there rather quickly and deal with it. Most importantly, setting up a method to register landscape companies so that violators can more easily be identified and use that registration process to verify that landscapers are knowledgeable about the regulations and only use equipment that are in compliance. Please approve the commissioner's new enforcement plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I'm curious, how would you, how are you going to notify landscape companies? Are we going to, do we have a list of them? I know that one of our landscapers who lives in Precinct 5 has always provided us with the names of some of the companies, but I just don't know if that's an exhaustive list. So are you expecting that as leaf blower operators are blowing leaves on the sidewalk and into the street and they are spotted by somebody, that that person would notify you that ex-landscape company is doing something? And expect that you would look it up and see whether there's a permit or how, you know? I'm just thinking about my own experience last week of seeing a company blowing leaves and dirt from the sidewalk into the street. And, you know, you try to approach people and they refuse to talk to you or, you know? So it's a difficult situation, and they run marked trucks as well, so.
First of all, we do have a list of all the landscapers that are doing business in town. We believe it's a very comprehensive list. We might have missed one or two, but we'll pick them up very quickly. Pending your approval tonight, we have a letter ready to go tomorrow to all the landscape contractors on our list informing them of the new, of the new regulations, sending them a copy of the new regulations and a copy of the permit application, which must be filled out, signed, and returned to us prior to, I believe it's March, I don't know, first weekend in March or so.
March 10th.
March 10th, thank you. As you know, the next open season begins March 15th. So we're trying to hit the ground running very quickly to get this information out. Yes, there's bound to be some that we miss, and we'll have to deal with them at the time through enforcement procedures. But our intent is when we get complaints, is to hopefully be able to identify the landscaper that's in violation, have a record of his permit, whether he has a permit or not. If he doesn't have a permit, there's a severe fine for that. And if he does, then we'll go through the normal enforcement process. So this is gonna take some baby steps to get going. We're confident that the plan we have already to put in place will be much better than what has been in the past, and we can move forward with this issue.
What about the issue of individuals? I know in paragraph number two, you have said that all persons who are using, you know, leaf blowers shall comply with this law. So I assume that means just, you know, anybody who, if I picked up a leaf blower and was using it on January 15th, I assume that, you know, I'm gonna be in violation of this. But how am I gonna know? How are the residents gonna know? Are you gonna send notices to people? I mean, maybe you could do it in the water bill or, you know?
Well, we have sent notices in the past. We have designed and distributed flyers to all the residents in town. We have done that at least once, maybe twice in the past. We are currently updating the newest brochure, and that's gonna, that's gonna go out as a mailer also very quickly, and we hope to blanket the entire town to let people know what the, what the law is and how, and how it will be enforced.
So the fine would be $150 per violation, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
So I would, I would put that prominently in the notice so that, because I think people pay attention.
And that fine is set by the, by Article 8.31 as the bylaws.
Okay.
I have two questions. One is, some folks have expressed in the past that they, they thought about sort of calling to report a violation, but they were concerned that potentially the, well, either two concerns. One, that the person might be undocumented and the engagement with the town, I think, thinking that it's police officers that are gonna go out there, so we can talk about that a little bit. But engagement with the town and somebody who might be undocumented and not wanting to sort of, to make that happen. And then, or the other is just, you know, the idea that the folks that are generally out there are working people, not the folks that hired them to be out there, and, and the real, the real folks that need to be engaged by the town are the people that hired them, not the people who are just, who would just get their, you know, the list of properties and get sent out there to do the job.
Yeah. And that's what these new regulations and the permitting system is meant to address. We realize that a lot of times, in most cases, that it's, it's the workers that are out there doing, you know, that are, that are in violations, and it's really the owners of the companies that we really need to go after. By permitting them, it gives us a better avenue to get to them and to make sure that the, that the bylaws are enforced. We have increased our enforcement officers from what was one to now about eight through rearranging and adding duties to existing personnel. So we have a lot more eyes and ears out on the road, and we're able to get to violations quicker than we were in the past. Most times when a complaint was made, by the time we were able to respond and get the, you know, the, the gun, yeah, and, yeah, we would leave a warning, you know, at the, on the door of the homeowner, but, you know, you know, you need to speak to your contractor if you got a violation, but we can't confirm it. But this will allow us to respond much quicker. So it's gonna be some tweaks gonna have to be made to this as we go forward, but I think it's a good plan to get started with now.
I think also, not on my second question, yeah, still on the first one, but also the folks who are working out there, there may be a language barrier at some point, too. Do you all, for the folks that are doing the enforcement, is there some level of training in terms of just how do we get? I mean, I think I would need training if you just said, hey, I'm gonna require you to go enforce this, you know, how we go, how you talk to folks, those kinds of things?
There is, but there's been issues in the past where, you know, there's been potentially volatile situations out in the field. You're right, for the most part, it's not police officers responding, it's us. And we try to train our personnel to, you know, be as tactical and diplomatic as they can. You know, it doesn't hurt to walk away also, and we take another avenue. So there are language barriers out there, there's no doubt, and we have encountered that in the past. But by permitting, and at least the vehicle that, that is on the site has to have the permit visible, we know who it is, and we can then get to the exact person that's hiring that person and try to get enforcement through that avenue.
And then the second question was...
By the way, on that, the police department's, or our sanctuary policy prohibits any kind of employee from inquiring as to immigration status, so I assume that people are trained on that, on that issue.
The second question was about, and folks brought this up during previous conversations about leaf blowers, but, you know, the particulates that are put into the air, and that's whether or not it's a gas powered or non-gas powered leaf blower. But, but it got, it did get me thinking about whether or not there are any requirements, if you can tell me state or local about ear, eye, and mouth-nose protection that's required that maybe these companies, it's required that they provide that, that equipment to the folks that they're asking to power these leaf blowers.
As far as I know, that OSHA does require that. Companies have to provide that safety equipment, this is, we have to provide safety equipment for our folks. You have to provide breathing apparatus, you have to provide ear and eye protection. We don't have a mechanism for enforcing that. That's, that's OSHA or the Department of Labor Services. But the new regulations talk to that point about employers providing the proper equipment for their employees, so it is part of the regulation.
All right. I'll just say, if someone, if someone thinks there's a violation there, I mean, the alternative is what, what select board member Heller said about just going up to the person and talking to them, which I don't advise at all.
I've done it, though.
I think if you called OSHA, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to know from your window, let's say, who actually is operating that, you know, that, that crew. And I'm just wondering if there's, I don't know if it's our role to get involved there, but if, I mean, I can't imagine a resident having any real option to, to alert anyone if, if that was the case and have a remedy. I'm not sure if you even called OSHA, if they'd respond, you know?
Not these days.
Along those same lines, in terms of residents informing the town when there is a leaf, a leaf blower via, a leaf blowing violation, and you may discover in the process of looking into that that the, that the company is not permitted, but what about utilizing two methods? One is Brook Online. Some people don't wanna make a phone call, they don't mind going on the, on the computer and making, you know, a relatively anonymous report in that way. The other is, what responsibility do people who hire landscapers have for making sure, and we, we look into contractors, licenses, and things like that when we do, when we have people do work at our house. You wanna make sure they have the insurance and blah, blah, blah. So what about landscapers? Should people be, you know, residents who have people cutting their lawns and, you know, that's when the typical leaf blowers are being used, do they need to know, you know, do they, they, should be aware that their contractors should have a permit? And how would we inform them?
I think that'll be part of the education process that we're gonna go through, making sure that, that everybody is aware of, of just what, what's to be expected. Notification, Brook Online has been used in the past. You have to remember that, that Brook Online is not the time, most timely method of communicating to us, particularly if there's a violation that's happening at the moment. You wouldn't call, you wouldn't report it on Brook Online if you saw a crime being committed on the street.
Right.
We don't have people that are just sitting there looking at Brook Online every minute of every day.
Yes, you do, yeah, okay.
So that you could have a timely response. So, yeah, we've, we've gotten complaints on Brook Online about leaf blower use, but it's not the most timely way to do it. Best thing is to pick up the phone and call us.
Again, I mean, I...
Educational materials will be clear on that.
Yeah, I would think that, you know, just thinking about what bills I get from the town, tax bill, of course, but that's not coming out till July or June, but the water bills and trash fee bills come more frequently, so, you know, maybe it wouldn't cost that much more to just put the information.
We've, we've found through experience that using the water and sewer bills or even the refuse bills is not the most efficient way to reach people. Most of the time, people look, open their bill and they look at it as junk mail and it's broken away.
They throw the stuff away, yeah.
And the billing systems that we're using for water and sewer bills right now don't allow for us to stuff them like we used to do in the old days. Everything is pre-printed and mechanized. So, yeah, you can print messages on the bill, but you can't add a stuffer to the, to the actual...
So how will we inform people?
This will be done with a separate mailer. We'll be mailing a separate leaf blower brochure to every household.
It's helpful, I put mine up on the refrigerator, because I always forget the dates of when it's acceptable or not.
It's just like the guide, the Public Works guide that we used to send out, you know, a few years ago, that had everything about all the things that we did. And it was very helpful, it had, you know, useful phone numbers, who to call, you know, what you could recycle and all that. We still have those guides there, but we find that a lot of people consider it junk mail, just throw it away. So, and it's not inexpensive to produce.
Are there any landscape companies that don't use leaf blowers?
I don't know how many do, Aaron.
So, does it make, does...
What, your son?
Does it make more sense to, because if you say leaf blowers, people may not realize that, that, you know, they may not be home and they're using the leaf blowers or whatever, but anybody who's having landscape work done, a landscape, any kind of landscape contractor or yard maintenance person should be informed, I think. And if you send a notice to people who are hiring this, you know, those companies, then, rather than just limiting it to leaf blowers, because I think most of those companies use leaf blowers, not everybody might think about that.
All the landscapers are gonna get notified, the ones that we know of. One of the best changes that was made to the bylaw was when it gave us the ability to, to go after homeowners as well as the landscapers as a joint responsibility. And that really changed the, the landscape of the whole thing. But it gave us the ability, you know, we respond and, oh, the homeowner's not there, the landscaper comes and he uses a leaf blower, he's in violation, he's cleaning the property. We get there, we can cite, cite the landscaper if he's still there, and we can also cite the homeowner, and we have done that. And the word gets around very quickly when the homeowner is receiving a, a citation of, you know, that went off, falling around with it, so.
Okay, I have a technical question. The bylaw authorizes you to promulgate regulations, and you've done that, but there's nowhere in the regulations where there's a fee for the permit.
It's attached, the permit application is attached to the regulations.
Yeah, in your form, there's a fee, but I guess the question is, doesn't that need to be in the regulations that you, that you issue?
I believe it is, Bernard, on page...
Somewhere?
Yeah, Enforcement and Penalties, Section 8.31.8B. Violation shall be subject to the following penalties.
Those are violations, that's not the fee.
Well, keep going.
Yeah, I've, I've been there.
Written warning, $50, $100, $150.
Okay, but nowhere is there a $25 permit fee? So that's just...
Oh, you're talking about the permit fee?
Right.
So the, one thing I wanted to just mention, Aaron Galentine, Director of Parks and Open Space, is we really wanna drive people to the website, so we're updating the brochure. We're also, we're, we're gonna have the information available in English and in Spanish, and we will be doing press releases as well. So that's a way that we really wanna get out to the homeowners, you know, the, the requirements around the bylaw... You know, the, the requirements around the bylaw haven't changed. So there's already been a lot of information that's been pushed out to homeowners, also to the landscapers. What we're finding is we just need additional tools to improve enforcement and overall compliance. As it relates to the regulations, if the regulations themselves, if it would be more clear to add one more line that, that states that there shall be a fee of $25 for the permit, we can add that.
I think that's probably prudent thing to do, since not everyone liked your regulations.
It, it may make it clear, but it's, I don't think legally it's necessary. The regulations establish where the law is, and what the regulations are, and then the actual permit application and permit process is just a mechanism to achieve points with the regulations.
But there's no, there's nothing in the regulations that authorizes you to charge $25 for a fee?
No, but, but the, the vote of you, or your vote authorizes that. The vote of the select board, which we've laid out, authorizes the-
Well, we're only going to vote on what, what's in the regulations. If it's not in the regulations, we're not voting for a fee.
Well, that's-
So I, I think it's easy-
Well, I'm not, I'm not so sure, Bernard, because on, I mean, I agree with you, I think it's probably, it doesn't hurt to add it and, you know, so people will know, but it references the application and permit fee, which, and permit, which are, in the very beginning, say, application and permit fee $25. So there is the notice, but I agree with him that putting it as many places as you can is a good idea.
And we can do that, but, but the vote that I'm asking you to take was in the last paragraph of the memo that I sent you, and it says, "The Department of Public Works respectfully request approval of the leaf blower control regulations and a fee of $25 associated with the issuance of an annual permit for private landscapers to operate leaf blowers." That's the vote I was hoping that you would take.
Okay, okay. Okay, I think that, that maybe fixes the problem, but it makes sense to me to include it in the regulations, since people aren't going to go to our board minutes to see what we voted for.
We can do that.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I wanted to ask whether or not it's, it's possible and permissible to include among these, these regulations. I know it, it does say in, in the italicize, in our packet at the bottom of page 170, it does say, "We trust that you will ensure all employees are properly trained, provided protection gear, and informed that," I think there's "to that" instead of "that," "the responsible use of a leaf blower includes using common sense." Appreciate the line about common sense. But I'm wondering if we can't, and I understand that there are, there are, there are state level requires, or OSHA requirements, rather, but I wonder if we can't make this a requirement as well while we're doing this, is, is to ensure that, that these commercial companies are providing the proper gear to the people who they're employing to do this work, which is, you know, I mean, is hazardous, frankly.
Those clauses were in the original regulations, and they were struck because it was, it was felt that, that it wasn't our purview to require that, that that was, that was state law or OSHA regulations that required that, and it was not under our purview to require employers to provide legal safety equipment to their employees. They're required to do that anyway. So that's, it was struck, and it was struck at the very end of the, of the regulations, so.
Struck by legal counsel?
Well, it, we thought it was, we had thought it was questionable, and legal counsel, while, you know, didn't render a very clear opinion on it, so we thought it best to just, just strike it, so.
Can you, can you reference the, it seems to me that, I mean, contractors should know OSHA regulations, but maybe, maybe there's someplace in here you could just reference a link to the OSHA. We encourage you to read, you know, blankety blank.
Yeah, we're not charged, nor do we have the authority to enforce OSHA regulations.
Right.
So if OSHA requires, landscapers provide safety equipment to their employees, and they don't do that, that's clearly a violation of OSHA law, but, but we're not authorized to enforce OSHA laws. So that's, it's a gray area, which is why we struck it.
As somebody that works for a private company, I can tell you that OSHA is very good about doing mailings about what obligations are. They are less responsive to phone calls for, for enforcement, but they are very good about messaging proactively what people should be doing. So I'm not bothered by the, the absence of, of reference to OSHA regulations in the, in the proposed regulations of the commissioner in the department.
Okay, any other questions, comments? So in our, our agenda, it does talk about annual permit fee, but the language that you read is, is separate. So I'm going to ask approval of the following. Approval of the leaf blower control regulations and a fee of $25 associated with the issuance of an annual permit for private landscapers to operate leaf blowers as part of their business in the town of Brookline. Any questions regarding that resolution? No? All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Fernandez?
Aye.
And Chair of Oversight? Thank you.
That's right. Thank you.
So our minutes should include that language.
Okay. I just want to note that it is really troubling that there is no mechanism right now for us to, to ensure the protection of people who are working in town doing this work. And we need to figure out a way to do that. And I don't know, you know, I, I think it's just, like, throwing our hands up and saying, well, it's their responsibility and it's too bad they won't do it, is not, is not sufficient for me. I don't know what the right answer is, sitting here right now at this point in the evening, but I think we shouldn't let this go.
Maybe, maybe we should have a conversation with Dr. Jett about it, because it seems to me that the Advisory Council on Public Health could weigh in on this.
That's a good idea.
I suppose that could be said about a lot of things, a lot of, a lot of employers, employees that work around the town, but this one, I know we're enforcing it, so I understand this a little bit more.
Okay. Ms. Jonas, this is not public comment. Do you have something to say?
I'm just, what, is it at all possible to, I thought public comment was at seven and not at six, and I'm-
It's always at six, first thing on our agenda.
So there's no way that I can-
We can take public comment at the end of the-
Yeah, at, at the end, we'll, we'll do that. And we're running early, so you don't have to stay until the next day to get your public comment. Okay. Surveillance and Military Type Equipment Committee, we're interviewing Salvatore Di Agostino. Yes. So, tell us why you're interested in this committee and what your background is, and any thoughts you have.
Okay, well, thank you for the opportunity to be here. My interest in this committee is because surveillance is obviously a very current topic of a lot of activity, both in terms of the charge of the Surveillance Committee in the municipality of Brookline, but sort of across the state of Massachusetts and the country as well, and pretty much around the world. So my interest is to bring the expertise that I have as a practitioner for decades, the opportunity to do it in the town that I live in, which has an active agenda. With the sort of proximity of being able to be here during the times that the committee meets, you know, makes me, maybe put up my hand. If you recall, I was brought here initially when the facial recognition, you know, warrant, or I'm sorry, whatever-
Warrant article on facial recognition.
Was, was brought up. And I realized that there was an opportunity to perhaps contribute, you know, as a Brookline citizen, and so, I mean, I have followed up with a CV. I mean, if you'd like me, Bernard, to go into a little bit. I mean, I've been involved with the, the use of machine vision technology since pretty much its inception for about 40 years. Been responsible for security systems at the U.S. Capitol Pentagon and help protect, you know, countries and institutions around the world. I served as the president and chair of the national, the, something called the Identity Ecosystem Steering Group, which is the public-private partnership that President Obama put in place to have a strategy for trusted identities in cyberspace. So I'm, I'm active internationally. It would be nice, and, you know, it'd be nice to do something locally, and so, you know, thanks for the opportunity. I noticed you had something on the agenda earlier about mobile apps. I could, you know, point you to the National Institute of Standards Publications and how you go about evaluating those things. Yeah, they, yeah, the facial recognition stuff is one way that I can contribute to the surveillance conversations, so thanks for the opportunity.
So if I recall, during the town meeting discussion, you warned the risk associated with facial recognition, and other things.
I, I said that the way that you go about using those kinds of technologies involves a certain approach, and one, one in which, I mean, is involved with best practice in having actual codes of conduct for the different use cases. There's a bit of work that you do before you deploy those technologies. I'd like to help the city do the best it possibly can when it comes to those kinds of things.
Of course, our warrant article banned the use of facial recognition.
As far as, you know, I mean, surveillance, I mean, it's good to call the committee, the Surveillance Committee, Bernard, because, I mean, that sort of is the issue. And how that takes place, whether it's commercially or, you know, from a public safety perspective, and how, how, you know, how to address the issues that are associated with that is, is an interesting challenge and something I, I spend a lot of time with, and I'd be happy to, you know, contribute as best I can here.
Any other questions?
I think you, you mentioned something earlier, Chair, about, that I'd like to hear your thoughts on, is the balance, like, how you, how you think through the balance between security and privacy, in particular, particularly, obviously, you worked in, in government contacts, it's a very different situation, like securing, you know, the Pentagon is very different than, than a community like Brookline, and how you think through the balance of, of those, those concerns.
Right, so, I mean, it's interesting, I mean, I see privacy as, as a better way to address risk. I mean, if you look at what security does, at the end of the day, security is a risk management exercise, right, with certain countermeasures that you put into place. I think by taking privacy on first and understanding human risks, that you can do even a better job of protecting people and property and all those sorts of things. So it's kind of an evolution of what I, how I've practiced this over the years. And, and I, and I think that they both are very important and relate to each other. The intersection of the two is sensitive information. And so what that does, you know, if you think of security, privacy, the place where they come together. And so if that helps you bring a focus on what you're trying to do from a, from a security and privacy perspective, and that, and in fact, it's a good thing. And I, I fully don't understand the idea that they're somehow at, you know, at counter to each other. I mean, I think that they're, they're very important to get both of those right, to, to enable things and do, you know, I mean, I mean, my, my interest is for humans to make good use of the technology, not for technology to make good use of humans. And so you can bring that to the, sort of, the approach in general.
Yeah, this being, I guess, just the, the kind of environment where the, the community has, I would, a really huge say here in terms of whether or not they want to, to trade off privacy, personal privacy, for, yeah, maybe a, a slight risk in, in safety. And I'm just curious to see as it goes on, I'm very excited, I wish I could go, if I had all the time in the world, I'd go to these meetings. But to hear you all think through, like, what does it mean that a community like Brookline said, you know, despite the fact that, you know, folks in, in public safety said this, you know, face surveillance is, is, is an amazing tool for us, a possible amazing tool for us, that the community rejected it soundly? And how do we go forward in crafting policy, understanding, and that may change over time, but understanding that currently, as far as we've seen, that this community is very concerned about, about privacy, and that, that the scales are really tipped in that way.
Yeah, I mean, and Brookline's not alone in that regard. I mean, I think you're clearly seeing a pendulum swing, so to speak. And, yeah, it's, it's an interesting opportunity.
Yeah, facial, facial recognition, for example, is a, a scary technology. I'm concerned that we may be fighting the last war. So I'd be interested in, you know, your thoughts on what are the emerging technologies that we ought to be thinking about and, you know, looking at the risk of? And, you know, this is something that the committee will, will, as a matter of fact, that's one of the specific things the committee is working on, but I'm interested in your thoughts. You know, what, what should be, we be looking at around the corner? That, you know, we're being, we're not looking at because we're focusing on, you know, what is the current war that we're fighting?
Right, well, I, so again, I think to your point, talking about surveillance in general and how, and how that takes place, and the extent to which people, there is, well, I, I think the challenges around, around transparency in terms of what the level of surveillance is, and that, and being able for the public to have a, an easily understood profile of what's going on in that regard. And I think that the, the regulations that are being put in place, or that companies are able to provide that as a, as, as a requirement of doing business when it comes to deal with people's personal information. So, and then, and in addition to that, the other challenges are around reciprocity, so people can actually engage, so it's not just coming one way down where you click something and who knows what, that there's a back and forth. And also for there to be proportionality, so that there's, you're, you're, you're not at a disadvantage to begin with, right? So, I mean, you think about it, in many cases, you're asked to agree to something about whether or not you're going to be under surveillance when you're already under surveillance in many cases to begin with. So it's, it's gone very far of, of field in terms of the current level that's set, and, you know, what is done without sufficient notice. And I think just, again, so just to the point of transparency, if Brookline were to be clear about as a city where surveillance is taking place and what kind, and, you know, there would be more than facial recognition, there would be Wi-Fi tracking, or it would be, you know, the use of Brookline apps, or it would be, you know, when you're in Uber and you're using public services, you know, the people that you're permitting, what do they do with the public information, the people that, you know, get into their vehicles, and are they clear about that? I mean, there's, you know, I mean, it, it's a, you, we would, there isn't enough time this evening to probably get into all the ways that that's currently occurring. How, how as a committee we would go about doing, or as a town, addressing that, that's an interesting problem to address.
Any other questions? No? Okay, we will take up your membership on the committee at a future meeting. Thank you.
You're welcome. I appreciate it. Have a good evening.
And by the way, every, the select board did receive your CV, so.
Okay, yeah, all right. Hopefully I gave you a sufficient background.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Okay. So next, Boilston Street Corridor Study Committee. Mr. Hernandez, maybe you can tell the board and the public, you know, something about this committee, and we have four or five applicants for membership.
Good thing. Yeah, I mentioned this last week, so I won't take too long, but this is regarding the stretch of Boilston Street. Others know it as Route 9, that extends from around Brookline Village, where Neta is, straight down to, as I mentioned last time, the award-winning Ruffalo Cafe. And, and really looking at everything from, you know, as we talked about last week, thinking about the, the streetscape, thinking about what potential uses there are for the spaces there, and really thinking about how we, we might want to incentivize certain types of development there, including community input, and that this builds upon the work of the Visioning Committee for that Boilston Street stretch, which, which took place prior to us getting this particular committee started.
Great. Great. Thomas Nali. So, tell us why you're interested in this committee, and something about your background that makes you a good candidate for it.
Thank you. I'll tell you about my background and a bit about my experience in the corridor over a number of years. I'm a registered architect and a planner. I have a degree from Cornell and two degrees from MIT. I've worked in private design firms on a wide variety of projects, including I managed the coordinating consultants liaison work for the Southwest Corridor project a number of years ago. I've worked in state government, in the State Division of Capital Planning and Operations, which was the name at the time, working on the design quality initiatives, and in the Corrections Special Unit, set that up for the agency. I am currently employed by Better City, which is a nonprofit advocacy organization, and I've been planning director for 30 years. I am currently senior advisor, I have a new title, but same responsibilities, including some additional responsibilities. And our organization represented the business community in the Central Ivory Tunnel project for a number of years, and since about 2005, we have focused on the larger transportation, public realm, and sustainability issues. Current project that I'm involved with is advocacy on the Austin I-90 multimodal project, which is a big deal, and we've been advocating for hopefully improvements to the construction staging process and to the design of the project. I oversee urban design work in, in my organization, working on public realm projects for the city of Boston, and I've just been appointed to the State Street Reconstruction Advisory Committee, looking at renovating State Street in downtown Boston. My corridor experience stretches back to the early 1990s, when I chaired the Development Committee Subcommittee on this corridor, and we got some zoning changes enacted, which had a minor influence on what happened along the corridor. We were a little bit ahead of our time in terms of the, the market, but we can catch up with that now. Back in 2005, I served on the Comprehensive Plan Committee for the entire Route 9 corridor, and was involved in helping get, getting going on the Gateway East project, both the project that's underway right now, rebuilding the street, and also the concept for the buildings that have been built and are underway right now in that part of, of the Washington Street ad end, actually. I've been with design advisory teams for a number of projects, including initially the first part of, of work done on the Toad's Hospital project, and later was involved in the River Road Working Committee, where we worked on the design guidelines and the shape of the design for the hotel that's being constructed now, served on the design advisory team on that project as well. Also on the Homewood Suites and, and the Hilton Garden Inn, as I said. In 2018 and 2019, I worked with Wendy Mockmuller, and we co-chaired the visioning project that we just talked about. So, I have extensive experience, and I have a few ideas about what could happen. Most importantly, I think we need to work with both the property owners and people who live and work in that area. It's, it's going to be their neighborhood for a long, long time. We want to be sure that we respect and respond to what we've already heard in the visioning process, and also what can happen down the road. So, there's a lot that can be done. We need to know a lot more about the market, we need to know a lot more about what could happen on this corridor, and we've got some good background information that has been prepared over the years, but we need to bring that up to date and come up with some design guidelines for what could happen on all of the sites, including ones that might be developed sooner rather than later, and some that might be a long time coming. We need to, again, relook at the market, and maybe some zoning changes will be required as well. We don't know yet until we start doing the work. So, that's my synopsis of what I think we need to do.
Anyone want to start with questions?
So, you alluded to things that the first iteration Development Committee got, they were ahead of their time, and I just wanted to hear what some of those things might be.
What happened was, we got, for, for example, we changed the zoning at the former Dunkin' Donut site, which is now being reconstructed. I think it was, if I, I might not quite get this quite right, but I think it was a G2 zoning, which we thought would provide an opportunity for a larger building and some development opportunity on the site. Instead, we got Dunkin' Donuts. The Dunkin' Donuts is now gone, and something closer to what we anticipated on that site being built. So, we're about 20 years ahead of our time.
Interesting.
So, you're on the River Road Study Committee. How did that committee address the adjacent properties owned by the Brookline Housing Authority in its sort of thinking and design, or design thinking?
Well, we, we work with neighbors from there.
Pardon?
We work with neighbors who served on the committee and brought, brought a perspective as well. And I think that was a case where there was a project that was trying to get underway, and so we were looking at that. We were also looking at potential opportunities on the remainder of that block, and none of which had been realized yet, and there's some real challenges on that block, as there are throughout the whole corridor. Challenges for accommodating parking, challenges for the dimensions of the site, and that's very critical. So, there's physical challenges, and also, most importantly, working with the neighbors and hearing what they had to say, and clearly, that's something that we need to do more of.
Just a little bit, I think Tom is, is right that we work very closely with the folks at the village of Brookline, the, the we own property directly across the street from River Road, and he's absolutely right. We had a committee member from there, actually, the ten president, and I went over a couple of times to present at meetings and had innumerable private conversations via email and phone. The Housing Authority, which is a little bit up the road and across the street, there wasn't a formal process, there was no member from the Housing Authority, I don't believe that served on the committee, but I certainly had a number of conversations, both with housing commissioners, but also with residents, over the course of the, the, the River Road process, to let them know what was going on.
I think it's true. There's a lot of teamwork that has to take place, and those people have connections or special expertise, or, or know people in the neighborhood, which is really critical. We need to take advantage of that and put together a committee that can bring a lot of different kinds of experience and connections to work on this project.
Yeah, my, my reason for asking that question was to sort of flesh or pull out, you know, ideas in terms of how the Boylston Corridor Committee would work to make sure that we don't end up with a beautiful avenue, starting at, you know, the Brookline Housing Authority, or after the Brookline Housing Authority area. You know, so, I mean, you know, participation by residents is one thing, and, you know, I hope people can think of other ideas to ensure that, at the end of the day, you know, that community sees that they are part of the corridor in a significant way.
It's absolutely critical. We need to schedule our meetings in such a way, hold the meetings at a location where people can get to them easily. You know, in my experience in the past, it's very difficult to get some people to come to meet because they're busy with their own lives, they're busy taking care of their children, they have other things going on. And if you hold a 7:00 PM meeting, that may not be the best time to, to really get people together. So, we need to figure that out as you go along, to be able to involve more people in the process.
So, I, I assume Mr. Fernandez is going to incorporate the community engagement efforts that are going on town.
Absolutely, very excited about it.
Into the, you know, process. Okay, any other?
Well, in that vein, I, I think that Tom was involved, I know his employer was very involved with the Dorchester Avenue redevelopment, and I think that in certain circles is believed to be one of the hallmarks of community engagement with a wide variety of different populations. So, maybe you can talk a little bit about why that was successful, and some of the strategies that would be applicable here.
The Southwest Corridor project?
Yeah.
Yeah, what, we won a couple of awards, a couple of national awards for the work that we did. It was done at a time when we didn't have all the tools that we have today. The internet didn't exist, electronic communication didn't exist, we didn't even have word processing. We had typewriters, and we had rub-on letters that we used to, to do our graphics. So, it was a very different time. But we produced documents and material that were shared with people in the neighborhood. We produced notebooks for each of the station areas in the corridor, and we did work in each of the three sections of the corridor. We had section planners who worked very closely with people in those neighborhoods. My job and my colleague's job in the office I worked in was to coordinate that work and make sure that we had consistent standards and consistent outreach process. And it was a lot of fun. I was a lot younger then, had less, had no gray hair, and, again, we didn't have the tools we have today. The tools that we have today let us do a much better job and be much more responsive to what people need to know.
Okay, so, we'll be taking up vote on members at a later meeting. Thank you for your.
Thank you.
All right. Next, Mark Lewis.
As I, when Mark makes his way up, I have to say, it's going to be important, though, to also use those tried and true methods, which aren't just about electronic communication, but what you did in that, in that other project, which is meet with people face to face over and over, so, yeah.
And you, and use mimeograph machines, that's what you're talking about, right? That shows how old I am. Anyway, yes, tell us a little bit about yourself and.
Hi, I'm Mark Lewis. I'm not near as qualified as Tom, I'm afraid to say. I live in the neighborhood, I live on Leverett Street, 22 Leverett, been there for two years. Before that, I was living over here on Elm Street, so it wasn't that far away. But I got a letter that said you guys were looking for, for people, some possible neighborhood representation, and we've got a nice little neighborhood right there, and we know, my wife and I have started kind of a listserv, so we know especially a lot of the people that have been there renting for a long time or, or own property there, and so, you know, got pretty good communication among us there. And, and I'm, I'm a writer, so I'd spend all my time, you know, in front of a laptop, but my, when I met my wife, I didn't even really know what urban planning was, but her dad is an urban planner at MIT, Tony Lee, you probably know Tony, and so he's, I've just been kind of an enthusiast of learning a lot about architecture and parks and design and traffic engineering and a lot of these things, and just been able to kind of be on the periphery of learning about from him. So, it's, it's an area of interest for me, but it's, it's not my work at all.
So, at, at the beginning of the corridor, there is the NEDA building.
Yeah.
What are your thoughts in terms of, you know, how that fits into the planning, you know, the, you know, long-term results of the study?
Yeah, the parking is the biggest issue, you know, as far as I can tell. I mean, it's, Route 9 is just, it squeezes so tight, and it squeezes in right between Lincoln and, and the park there, and so, you know, everything really slows down quite a bit. And, so I guess, you know, what I would be interested in seeing is some sort of big ideas that could try to tackle some of that, and, and, you know, I'd spend a lot of time walking around there, walking over to Pill Hill area, and it just, any, any way that we could kind of tie the two neighborhoods together would be really amazing, I think, because we've kind of got the Route 9 just kind of cutting right through right now. But it seems like maybe between the park, Boylston Park, or Boylston Playground, and the old Lincoln School, there's some opportunities there, and, and, yeah, down by NEDA, and, you know, there's a lot of buildings that seem like they're not, a lot of sites along there, especially between us, where I am on Leverett, like, pretty close to the Audi building, it seems like there's a lot of sites there that would be really great redevelopment opportunities, possible affordable, affordable housing opportunities, and, see, I would just be, you know, more of a spectator, but be interested in, in seeing what kind of ideas people come up with, and then being a conduit to the neighborhood about those ideas.
Any other questions?
What are some things that you've seen in other communities where you may have visited that you think are, are good uses of space, that you might think we might be able to take advantage of here?
I guess, you know, what I think of, I've spent some time on Harvard campus, and the way that they've developed Harvard campus, where they've sort of maintained the historic buildings and, and kept them up in really good shape, and then been able to bring in newer buildings alongside them or conjoined to them, or, and, and the way that the spaces are, are so pedestrian-friendly, and like, the way that that, the campus just goes right over that section next to Mass Avenue, you know, that section where the, the campus just extends, where's that, west, beyond the yard there, it seems like there's some really great ideas there. That's the place that I would say would inspire me the most in a broad sense, as far as what would seem to be appropriate for Brookline's approach to both having all these amazing old buildings, as well as opportunities to bring in some, some really new, nice stuff.
Any other?
Well, I'll just, I'll just say, you know, we're looking for more than a spectator, and I'd expect you to be more than a spectator in these meetings. I think it's important that, that whatever this committee comes up with, it just doesn't have, it doesn't just have the appearance of involvement of the residents, that it actually has involved the residents. And, and so, you know, when you come up and say you're not an expert, I say, you live right there, you're definitely an expert on this stretch of road. I mean, you, you either, you either driven down it, or you've walked down it, you know, a day and the evening, and you've got a sense of what the vibe is there, and I think that's really important for, for the committee, to have, have folks that, that have also, like, constantly are in this area to be on the committee, it's going to be really important for us.
Yeah, that's great, thank you. Yeah, my son goes to Pierce, so I'm walking him back and forth pretty regularly. So, that's great.
I'll just echo select person Fernandez's comments and say, a successful committee has a variety of perspectives and skill sets, and if we wanted a, a committee of all architects or urban planners, we wouldn't have, we would have written a different charge. So, please don't apologize for putting your hat in the ring and expressing an interest and trying to bring your unique perspective to a community conversation.
Thanks.
Thank you. Let's see, Edward Tad Campion. So, tell us about yourself and why you're interested in this committee?
Yes, thank you, and good evening. I'm Tad Campion, and I'm highly qualified as a neighbor. I've, I've been, lived in Brookline for 42 years, on Walnut Street for 32 years. I've been to a lot of meetings, including going way back for the, about the Red Cab site, remember Red Cab?
How could we forget?
I got to know some of the people in Red Cab, because I could hear them from my window. I've been to many meetings around the development of that site, again, only as an interested neighbor. The, and there are a lot of lessons learned from the Homewood Suites development, I think. Also been involved with the Visioning Committee of Route 9, led to that kind of preliminary report of, of the concept of what should be happening between High Street and Cypress Street, and the varied groups involved and varied types of, of lots. As you know, many of, of the areas for potential development are very close to residents, and you need to need, involve, and communicate with, with neighbors. I have close ties and know the people on the High Street Hill Association, is one of the neighborhood groups, and have, as I say, been involved in the community for a long time. My wife is Brookline school nurse, now retired, she seems to know everybody, too, a lot more than I do, even.
She definitely does.
But the, been to meetings. But the, been to meetings and participated in discussions around the development of the Dunkin' Donuts site, which I walk by just about daily, which I think is progressing in the right direction and is going to work. And same for the development at the east end of the gateway, the hotel and the office building. You've got to involve and communicate with neighbors, including somehow with the people who aren't showing up at the meetings. It takes some outreach, some communication, and I think both some electronic and written summaries and communications that can be circulated to people, a lot more people that are coming to the meetings. Professionally, my background involves communication, I'm an editor. Glad to answer any questions.
The usual question I ask, how do you see this corridor as being more than just the beautifying you, starting after the Brookline Housing Authority buildings? And, you know, that's a question regarding engagement of different communities in the process, but also, what does, how would the, could the end product be something that is a product of, you know, all the communities around there?
I think what we've got to work towards is going to depend on what all the stakeholders can agree on. We need to have visions from experts, but we need to hear from abutters, from the businesses that are already there, as well as hearing from potential developers who want to come in. We want development, there needs to be development, it needs to be done in a way that meets the developers' requirements and needs, but also is compatible with what the residents in the area, especially those that are right nearby, as well as the whole town. And what we will need to hear from the town and experts about the function of Route 9 itself, for both for automobiles, for cars, trucks and pedestrians.
Any other questions?
Well, I know that some of your involvement dates back to the Lincoln School campaign in 1990, you're, both you and Peggy.
Yes.
So you've clearly been a resident, I think, in the neighborhood all that time, is that correct?
Oh, yes, yeah. Son lives in the first kindergarten, first person, the first group to go all the way through Lincoln, and all three of my boys went all the way through the Brookline High system.
Yeah. So you mentioned historic preservation. Are you thinking about any particular buildings in the Beacon Street corridor, or?
Well, the most beautiful building on that corridor is the Neta, now the Neta Building.
Right, Brooklyn.
And I would hope that would be preserved, it certainly should be. I think the historic, impact on historic buildings in historic neighborhoods, it really has more to do with the immediate neighborhood, not Route 9 itself. I mean, nobody was trying to preserve the Dunkin' Donuts building for historic reasons. But the, for example, White Place, which is an amazing, historically quirky little area, was, spoke out and got a lot of attention, and I think in the end got some pretty good compromise with the development of the Homewood Suites building in a way that was respectful of the nearby historic buildings in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
What do you think is missing along that corridor right now that could be?
An overall plan and concept of what will work together. It couldn't be more random and haphazard than the way it is now. We've also forgotten about pedestrians. If you ever walk across Route 9 between, you know, that's a long stretch between Cypress Street and High Street, and, you know, a lot of us go across there at times against our better judgment, but that's, we've got to think of pedestrians, we have to think of all the groups that are involved. But we need an overall plan of development that's economically realistic and that fits with the larger neighborhood, both immediately surrounding and what the town wants and what's compatible, and we'll look and feel like Brookline, not, you know, we're not going to be the greenway of downtown Boston.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
I would say briefly, just that I appreciate that folks like you, yourself and others who have served on the Visioning Committee are willing to continue this work. I think it speaks highly of the work that's already been done, and I'm glad that you all are interested in continuing, so thank you.
Okay, next, Fred Perry.
Good evening, I'm Fred Perry. I own a building at 91 Boylston, which is right in the middle of this group, and I've worked in it for the last 22 years. I know the area extremely well for that reason. I live in Brookline Village in Precinct Four, I have for, lived there for more than 40 years, and so I walk through the village to work pretty much every day. And again, it really makes me very familiar with the neighborhood, and I think with its needs. I run a business there, I am a businessman, it's a business that scientific instrument imports and sales that do there. Other qualifications that may be relevant are that I think I have a green perspective on things. I was the president of Green Space Alliance for six years and have been involved on that side of the community. Former town meeting member, on the advisory committee for a couple of years, conservation commissioner for a year, and I have time and interest to put in.
Any questions to probe, what he's going to do with that time and interest?
What do you do for 91? Are you a writer, is that right?
No, no, I, we are, my company's Boston Electronics, and we import scientific gear of various sorts, mostly from Europe, and sell it to universities and government laboratories, photon counting things. We've got stuff on Mars that JPL bought and sent there. We've got, you know, we sell it to Nobel Prize winners, which makes me proud and happy. Fun stuff like that, big science.
So wait, who are the Nobel Prize winners that you're talking about? That work with you?
Who got the Nobel for the LIGO Gravity Observatory, two years ago I was, I think. Used to come to the office and pick out his own detectors, he brought his own test set. And to name one.
Okay. So give us your vision of this corridor as it relates to the surrounding community, and of course, I'm always, I've always been concerned with the Brookline Housing Authority buildings there in that community.
I won't.
But, you know, other communities also, including the award-winning Refulo's Cafe.
Well, the Refulo Cafe is great. And I'm glad they got an award, but I was surprised to read it in the paper. I can't say that I have a great vision for that area, other than to make it not so bad. It's really historically been the worst part of Brookline as far as I was concerned. When I, when I bought there in 1999, it was, it was really, you know, the worst. And now it's, it's certainly come up, starting with the hotel, which replaced that horrible Red Cab site, which was a blight for so long. But I think that, you know, if you had plenty of resources, then you would, you would send part of Route 9 into a tunnel across from Lincoln School, or old Lincoln School, and connect the park and the school at ground level. But I don't know that those kind of resources would ever be available, that's certainly an interesting question to ask. I think that going forward, the committee will have to, and I would expect, come up with ideas like doing some of this overlay zoning, which promoted lot accumulation on the so-called Emerald Island, because some of these potential, some of these land sites now, some of these pre-holds are just too small to redevelop as is. But, you know, I say that in a self-serving way, because mine is one of them, too small. But how does that all work out? I don't know, it's a matter for discussion, and people like, that know these things better than I, will weigh in.
Let me ask a little bit of a leading question. So at least I always think of Route 9 as being primarily commercially driven. So there's businesses like yours, there's now a hotel, there's been a number of auto-centric uses historically on Route 9, but there's always been some residential, and that's actually increased a little bit, a little bit over the years, and that increase, I think, has flown under the radar. Do you think the mix of residential and commercial is appropriate, or should the knob be turned more one way or the other?
I myself like the idea that there's, that there's a mix, I just think it makes more of a neighborhood out of things. I recently had a realtor offer to do a study of the lot that I own, and they were, funny kind of a realtor, who really looked at it in a, as a real sort of academic study, financial study, and they came back and said that the value of this place was ambiguous, it might, it was just as, it was valid as a resident, as much as it was valid as a business. And it would really depend on who might acquire it, which way it went, as opposed to having some obvious financial sway in one direction or the other. So I wasn't surprised at that, really.
Any other questions?
So 40 years is a long time.
It is.
I assume that the answer to my two-part question about what is one of the things that has changed for the better, the Red Cab site, but what hasn't changed that you'd maybe like to see changed?
Well, I'd say that there isn't much on that street that hasn't changed. A few houses haven't had paint perhaps for 40 years. But most of the rest of it has changed at least some in that time, not necessarily for the better, but at least some. The storefront that I'm in was a TV repair place when we bought it, or it had been. It's an office building now, just about every place has had some kind of change of use if it's not residential.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Rashna Balakrishna. Introduce yourself and why you're interested in this committee.
My name is Rashna Balakrishna. I'm a longtime Brookline resident. I also, I both live and work here in the area between Coolidge Corner and Brookline Village. I grew up here, I graduated from Lawrence School in Brookline High, then went to Harvard College and Georgetown Law School. I currently work as a real estate attorney in my family's real estate business in Brookline. I was very involved in the permitting that we did for our project on the other end of Boylston Street at Hammond, 1180 Boylston. I worked closely with the planning department on that project and also with the people in that neighborhood. I've been, as I said, I grew up here, I moved back to Brookline with my family in 2000s, so, you know, in total, about four years of living here, in addition to a couple other places. And I have a strong interest in, I'm very familiar with the corridor, and I really have a strong interest in seeing it thrive. I agree with a lot of the other comments that have been made. I think, you know, there's certainly room for improvement, and I think that, you know, this is a great opportunity for the town to be proactive in various ways and, you know, really make it a better place.
So as a real estate professional, what insights can you share with us regarding the possibilities, you know, the risks, et cetera, of this corridor?
Well, it's obviously, it's a very busy area. It's got, as has been mentioned, you know, I think in managing the properties, the balance of the residences and the businesses, traffic and parking are, I think, are major issues that need to be considered in planning for this area. You know, there's a lot packed into, you know, that space, there's quite a bit there, there's a lot of people driving through. So it's, it's an important road, it's an important part of the town, and I think it, I think all the various considerations should be balanced in planning for it, you know, whether that means zoning changes or supporting the businesses in that area, and also balancing the considerations of the people that live around there.
So in terms of the physical structure of the corridor, if there's development, parking's going to become an issue, yet you have this rock formation at the Lincoln School, you know, and a lot of other physical restrictions. How would you, what thoughts do you have or vision do you have with respect to dealing with that particular aspect of any development project, any development effort?
Yeah, no, it is definitely a consideration, we have, are dealing with that issue as well at our project, where there's bedrock on a portion of it. You know, I think with parking, one of the solutions is to put it underground. Some buildings on Beacon Street have it on the first floor, it could be above the building. Again, it's a lot, there's, it's not, there's a lot packed into that space. It would be great to also take some steps to make it more pedestrian, excuse me, friendly, and increase more pedestrian use, but the reality is there are a lot of people driving there, and so I think with the bedrock, it's, there are ways, nowadays, the way construction is, I think, there are better ways to remove it than there used to be, which are less, you know, which will have fewer adverse effects on the area, and in that area... And in that area, unfortunately, the, the, I mean, there is rock in, in some portions of it, but at the same time, if, I think if the town is proactive and works with people who are interested in, in doing something there, then it can be dealt with. We, as I said, we've been dealing with that in our project, and I'm, I'm told that there, the methods for removing it are much better than they used to be.
Any other questions?
So, I'm going to recycle a question that I posed to one of the other applicants. What have you seen elsewhere that you'd like to maybe throw out to this, this committee as an idea? Anything that you've seen in any other communities that you think work well?
I think what I've seen in Boylston Street and Newton, some of what they've done has been a positive. In particular, I'm thinking about the street, and I think the way that they have developed it in terms of supporting the retail, having ample parking, is good. I'm not saying that we should try to reproduce that, because that's a different area, and that's a different kind of a place, but I think that makes it, you know, it certainly helps the businesses there. It makes it a more attractive area, and it's something to be considered. I know people who live around there. I know when I go there, sometimes I walk there, sometimes I drive there. You know, I think parking is, is really, is an issue. The people who live there have a tough time, because they have lots of people coming for various reasons, and parking on their streets. But the people who come there need a place to put their cars. We also have, I think, I've seen in, you know, I think in, in parts of Boston, and in Coolidge Corner, and other parts of Brookline, I think, really, you know, the Brookline Hills, and also the Brookline Village T, you know, there should be connections, I think, made from, from the T, in whatever way it can be done, to Boylston Street, so that, you know, brings people there. So, you know, I think, I think there's, there's lots of possibilities, and, you know, a lot of different things to consider.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to recycle a question. Talk to me about your vision for the area that incorporates the surrounding, you know, Brooklyn Housing Authority properties, as well as, I guess, the Village Way, that's further down. But what is a vision that would result in everyone in the community seeing the corridor as their project? It's a very open-ended question, I know.
Right.
See how you deal with it?
Yeah, there's, you know, again, I think there's a lot of possibilities. I mean, it could start with things as simple as having really good sidewalks and crossovers at, at various points of Route Nine. You know, I think it's been mentioned that it's hard to cross Route Nine. It might be interesting to have some covered overhead, over Route Nine, ways to cross, so that we're not just waiting for the, the traffic to stop. You know, I think the vision, it, somebody had previously said it's, it's kind of a random mix of, of things, so I think something that feels, you know, that kind of brings the neighborhoods around there into it, and, and also is, is more commercially viable, because it feels like the, some of the businesses there have had difficulties. So, I think incorporating all of that is, is what I would like to see there.
So, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be, we have a process for selecting numbers, and that'll occur in a couple, the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, next, finally, your public hearing, wherever you are, Zoftigs. Question of approving a change of category for Zoftigs, Inc., doing business says Zoftigs from a wine and malt license to an all alcohol, alcoholic beverages license. Expose, keep for sale, and sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises at three thirty-five Harvard Street.
Thank you, select board. I'm Stephanie Boudreau for Zoftigs. I have with me Robert Schuman, who's the owner of Zoftigs, and Matthew Otten, who is the current manager of record. So, the Zoftigs is seeking a conversion of its current beer and wine license to a all alcohol license. The proposed hours are for sale of alcohol, eight to ten, Monday through Saturday, Sunday, twelve to nine. They're seeking to convert the license to enhance the use of the restaurant, to be more consistent with the neighborhood, to expand brunch, to expand dinner. They're, they're adding a, they'd like to add a Bloody Mary bar, which I think everybody in the neighborhood will benefit from, and so they're seeking a conversion. Mr. Otten will remain as the manager, and I have the green card receipts that I can bring up to the select board for submission.
Yes. Any questions?
So, no change to operations, it's just a different, a different venue, if you will.
That's correct.
I, I know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. You're right next to a school. Have there ever been any issues related to your proximity to the devotion now, Florida Ridley Griffin School?
No, we've never had any issues with, you know, students, or parents, or anything along that matter. If anything, since the devotion school has finished up, we're seeing business start to increase a little bit. Parents are coming in with children before, after classes, so if anything, we're seeing more of an increase in our customer base.
I frequently go here, because it's the only time, the only place you can get breakfast food at like ten A, at ten P M. Yeah.
So, this is a public hearing. Any comments, questions from the audience? No? Any other comments or questions from the board?
Well, I agree with Heather that you can get omelets, which I love, any time of the day.
Yep.
I am assuming now you'll be able to get a Bloody Mary any time of the day. Is that the idea?
That is the goal, yes.
I see. Okay.
Not that we're encouraging people to drink any time of the day, but it's just that...
Well, I, I, there was one comment, one comment I didn't understand, and one, the proposed alcoholic beverage service hours are Monday to Saturday, eight A M. to ten P M., and Sunday, twelve P M. to nine P M. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, you're still going to be serving food on Sunday mornings, I see.
Oh, yes, oh, yeah.
That was just the alcohol service.
Yeah.
Okay. So, this is a public hearing, so Ms. Jonas, I say, no, stand up and get to the mic.
I'm, 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 I'm a town meeting member for precinct sixteen, but just because I happen to be here anyways, I am someone who goes to the Coolidge Theater a lot, and want to be able to have places to go after the movie. So, I'm actually wondering, is it necessary to close as early as ten o'clock? It's kind of the opposite of what you might have thought I'd ask.
We'll definitely review that.
Yeah, I mean, those are the current hours that have been approved, so if the business lends itself to expanding that, then that's something that would be considered.
Quick question also, from the other side of town, but also who goes to the Coolidge and to Zoftigs. How many licenses are left? Full alcohol licenses are left?
Mr. Clowder?
I don't know offhand.
I, I believe that this is the last. I believe this is the last one.
This is the last liquor one?
I, I, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent certain, but I do know that we, we, we had to grab it.
My belief is that this is the last all kinds, non-geographically restricted license. There are a few licenses, all kinds licenses available for Washington Square, but there's no other license that can be used anywhere in the community.
Do you have plans to go back to the legislature for expansion?
We'll, we'll decide that at some future date. Do you have a current plan?
What I'll say is that those, those geographically restricted licenses in Washington Square, there was a sunset date attached to them, if they were not issued. That date is, is coming up quickly, and there are conversations about whether those licenses, how could maintain those licenses, either in Washington Square or elsewhere. More, more to come. There are conversations ongoing, not only within this building with the relevant folks, but also in the legislature, so...
The question I, I don't understand is, if that deadline doesn't get met, is it the state level that says, okay, lose those licenses?
Yes.
That's correct.
The state law.
How many are at risk?
I believe it is two, but, but don't quote me on that.
I'm not going to quote you.
It's two, two plus or minus.
Thank you.
So, any other questions from the board or the audience? You have a question, sir? Don't mean to put you on the spot, but you're the only person left. Anyone else? Okay. I move approval of a change of category for Zoftigs, Inc., from a wine and malt liquor license to an all alcoholic beverages license at three thirty-five Harvard Street. All in favor, Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Love your choice.
Okay. Finally, before we have Ms. Jonas make her public comment, the, let's see, we're voting on appointment to the Diversity, Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations Commission.
Correct. Mr. Chair, the commission has multiple vacancies, and we have a current applicant who the board has previously interviewed, is Irving M. Allen, so I'm going to put Mr. Allen's name for consideration for a three-year term, and you can designate that by saying aye, Irving Allen.
Aye.
He's appointed for a three-year term.
Okay, good.
Can I? Go ahead.
I was just going to say, given that there's so many vacancies, and given out of coming, excuse me, the previous time meeting, this commission got several very big jobs, and I think there was some pontification, some observation on this board, that there may need to be some special skills given to this committee, or there need to be some individuals with special skills put on this committee. It would be beneficial for me, as we think about who to put on in the future, if we hear from the chair about her observation about what skills may be necessary, and how we can arm this committee with the resources, both human capital and otherwise, to be as effective as, as they possibly could.
Mr. Fernandez, I think, can report on conversations with the chair, and when she's going to appear to make the presentation?
Yeah, I think that'd be an excellent idea.
But it, it, it's being scheduled, as I understand.
That she's, that she's going to appear before the board?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've heard the same thing. I'm not exactly sure when that's happening.
Okay.
But I think, I, I'm glad that she is going to be before, before the board.
We thought she was coming.
That's what happened.
So, we'll have to check that out.
I, I did have one thing I'd like to see, if we can update on the roster there. The, the student liaison has changed from, from Vishni, Vishni to, his name's Emre Muftu. That is E.M.R.E., last name M.U.F.T.U. The other thing that we recognize is that, for some reason, when the charge was put together, however long ago, is that the student liaison is actually a non-voting member of the committee, and, and I don't know that anyone on the committee feels like that's appropriate, and that, that there's no reason why the student shouldn't be able to be a voting member of the committee, and I'm hoping that maybe we can figure out how to make that change.
Well, I think all you need to do is to draft a revised charge.
Revised charge, but here we vote on it.
Yeah.
Happen to that.
Let's just make sure it's spelled out in the bylaw.
Yeah. That would require a time meeting, actually.
Yeah. That would, that, I, I know it sounds like a lot of process for a simple change, but let's just make sure that, that, that we're crossing Ts and dotting Is, and going through the legally required way to, to make that change.
Unfortunately, the bylaw does specify, although it may not specify whose voting, we should check that.
Just, I'll check it.
That's all. I'll check it and let you know.
Okay. Thanks, ma'am.
Okay. So, you know, oh, Ms. Jonas, you want to make your public comment now?
I'm very sorry to do this to you. So, I, I just, it's so fascinating, all the issues that came up tonight, I want to talk about all of them. I will say on leaf blowers, Germany is thinking of banning leaf, gas-powered leaf blowers nationwide because of the worker issues, the environmental issues, and I wish we would do the same. But I'm here on the development of Chestnut Hill Realty's Hancock Village. I guess Regina spoke about the blasting already. Nancy Fulton shared with me the email that you wrote, and I appreciate that that was written, and it was very reassuring to hear that the town is working on that. We're, we're walking with Ed Coppinger tomorrow, but we didn't hear anything about getting the gas line in before the blasting starts, because that is in fact what pretty much all of us on Rose Road are worried about. And we're certainly glad that it's now on the table for National Grid to do, but we really hope that it's going to be in time, so that we don't have our houses at risk of getting blasted. And I, both the National Grid worker who I spoke with, and a main drilling and blasting representative I spoke with, said that National Grill is supposed to be on-site every single day when there's blasting somewhere. We're having six months of blasting, of massive rock, and in light of the fact that National Grid feels it is appropriate to be on a site when there's blasting, that must indicate that there are risks, and we've had many, many leaks on our street, so I really hope that it can be done before the blasting starts. So, that's the one issue. The other is...
Can you tell me what the email is you're referring to?
The email, oh...
I sent an email to Nancy Fulton, so...
Right.
It's, it's my email.
Right. But he, I presume he summarized what the select board was doing. The other thing, this is actually more for, this is, Will Verrell, I guess, had filed a public records request to the town to find out the, the analysis of the drainage plan, and he did not get a response from the town, and that was very disappointing to hear. And apparently, he had to get the Secretary of State involved to get the town to provide their analysis, and he had conjectured that it's possible, that it's because the town did not yet do a proper analysis of the drainage, and this is very important to him. He, his house, along as, as well as several others, are budding, where this, this new development is going to be in. It's, it has major drainage problems, and he did get a response from the town, finally. He still doesn't feel it's adequate, and it's going to go, he's going to work with the Secretary of State on this, so this is very disappointing to hear that we need to do that. But what the town has responded is that they haven't completed their technical review. So, it seems extremely puzzling, how did they get a comprehensive permit without getting approval of the drainage plan? So, that's something that should have been done in order to give the permit, so, so that's another issue. And now, I'd like to address the tenants' issue. I personally do not understand how a landlord can do a lease with a tenant, knowing that that tenant is not able, that they are going to ask that tenant to move out of that apartment prior to the completion of the lease, with, and not informing them. And again, we have a permit that we have granted to Chestnut Hill Realty, and we have people, tenants here, who, I, I don't know landlord-tenant law, but it seems like this is something that needs to be addressed at a higher level than the level that it's being addressed at. And I also want to talk on behalf of Carolyn Fall, who's just done a ton of work on behalf of the tenants. She has said that the tenants, there's a telephone number to call in Chestnut Hill Realty, they're all worried, they're terrified about the blasting right next to their houses. We're wondering if there's ever been such massive blast... We're wondering if there's ever been such massive blasting so close to residential properties. Any calls are apparently not answered, the website doesn't work, and what she has suggested to me to ask you is whether it's at all possible to at least get a town liaison for the tenants to work with and residents. This is a huge project, just like there's other huge projects in town, and this is going to have profound implications for everybody, and the landlord, we don't seem to see that they've been very responsive, so we would like to have someone in town who's also a specific liaison for that. The other thing is she's been trying to get the blasting, the analysis of the blasting plan, and that has not yet been forthcoming, so we would like to get that in the neighborhood so that can be reviewed as well. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. If we know the business, why don't we adjourn?